Good evening and welcome to the March 20th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting for the City of San Bruno. A roll call, please.
Chair Chase.
Present.
Vice Chair Biassodi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Legacy is excused this evening. Commissioner Lithing.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Lithing, you would read us on the pledge?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okey doke. First order of business, we need to have approval of the minutes from the February 20th, 2018 meeting.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I move we approve the minutes.
Oh, through the chair. I actually have some comments on the minutes, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay. On page four, right above public comment, Commissioner Mason's comments. I didn't, I don't recall saying that we wanted to turn the station into more of an experience. It was along the lines of that the applicant is wanting to turn the station to more of it, of an experience. So I would just request that you look at that one more time, just want to make sure it's accurately depicted. My next comment is-
Through the chair on that, if we could perhaps just change that to indicate that Commissioner Mason suggested the project include a diaper-changing station in the bathroom, period.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I have on my notes, actually. Additionally, on the bottom of page four, it's actually continuing sentences to page five, but the, just to be clear on the question, it was whether we could consider the pumping stations as if they were an additional eight parking spots.
Could you repeat that again, please?
Yeah, so on page, the bottom of page four to page five, it says Commissioner Mason commented that she visited the site before the meeting. She asked if there were eight additional spaces available at any given time. And just to put it in context, it was the eight additional spaces, I was specifically referring to the parking, the pumps where people are actually parked while they're pumping their cars to go in and get food.
So again, through the chair, it seems as though you're wanting to change the language to reflect more accurately what you stated to indicate a question whether the eight spaces at the pumping stations were going to be counted toward parking. Is that accurate?
Not officially counted, but whether we could consider them-
Could consider them.
-parking spaces, because if I remember the conversation, it was that there were people who would park at the pump and then go inside and get food.
Yes.
So could we, even though maybe not officially, but could we always say that there would be an additional eight spaces? Because some of my fellow commissioners had brought up the issue of parking spaces.
Okay. We could make that change if so directed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, what, if the, if, if I could request that staff maybe listen to the recording again, I definitely don't want to change what the record shows, but if I, I just want to make sure it's in context. Thank you. And then, I believe it's on page, oh, I'm sorry, just on page five, Commissioner Mason, I just, if we're, depending on how we're phrasing the minutes, but we're, the thank you was a thank you to the applicant, so, and it's a small difference, but thank the applicant for investing in the property. And then the last one is on page 10. And I believe Director Waltering, you had replied that all businesses should have signage, temporary signs must be replaced with permanent signs. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was also at this meeting that you stated that staff would be providing a future presentation to the Planning Commission on the plan for downtown?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that it's reflected, because I know I'm definitely looking forward to that. And that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to add that there are a few typos. I'll give a copy of my minutes to staff and they can fix them. And with that, I'll approve that the minutes be approved as corrected by Commissioner Mason.
My second.
Okey doke. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And those in abstention, would be myself, since I was not at the meeting. Okay, well, if you pass with the corrections, and I'm sure Commissioner Peterson will get his typos over to staff.
Yes, sir.
We'll all have a restful night. Okay. Let's see, next item, communications.
There are no additional communications this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next item would be public comment. Now, this is on items not on the agenda. If there's anybody here who would like to speak on an item that is not agendized, please go to the microphone now and let us hear your voice. Seeing none, I will open and close that all in one motion. Conflict of interest from many of the commissioners tonight. Anybody have any conflicts? Nope, nope, nope. All good? Okay. Well, that's good. Let's jump right into it. Item number five, public hearings. There's a request for a use permit to allow construction of an 858 square foot second-floor addition to a single-story home that would increase the gross floor area of the existing dwelling by greater than 50 percent. 68 percent is what it actually would increase to. And exceed the maximum permitted .55 FAR to a .70. If approved and constructed, the total living area of the home would increase to 1,824 square feet, and the gross floor area of the home would be 2,113 square feet, including the garage. A use permit is required per Section 12230 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. The project before you is 107 Elm Avenue. The subject property is located in a residential district on the west side of Elm Avenue between Santa Lucia Avenue and San Felipe Avenue. The subject lot is substandard, measuring 2,500 square feet in area. The property is currently developed with a one-story, single-family dwelling that contains two bedrooms and one bathroom and 930 square feet of living space. The residence includes a attached 325 square foot one-car garage. As I said, the existing home has two bedrooms and one bath, a kitchen and living room and 930 square feet of living space, and the proposal is to add a second floor, which would add two bedrooms, one bathroom, and a media room, bringing the total living space of the home up to 824 square feet. The existing 198 square foot covered rear patio would be removed as part of this proposal. As mentioned earlier, the project would result in an FAR of .70, which exceeds the .55 requirement and also exceeds our internal threshold of .62, typically used for a standard 5,000 square foot lot. However, the subject lot is substandard with a total of 2,500 square feet, and the, the Planning Commission has not in the past applied that same threshold to substandard lot as of yet. Additionally, the proposed second story with considerable setbacks and a gabled roof would blend in well with the existing neighborhood, which consists of one and two-story buildings. As far as public comment, we mailed notices to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property and received no comment from the public in, from those notices. However, at, we did have an ARC meeting last month on the project, and the owner of the, the owner and occupant of the adjacent property to the right did attend that ARC meeting to express his opposition to the project, because, and his concerns were that it would cost, the new floor would cast shadow onto his adjacent building, including its internal courtyard, and that that would in, in turn make the rooms dark that receive, have windows on that courtyard. And then he was also concerned about the placement of the dryer vent. And overall, he would prefer that that, that the building remain a single-story building, is what he expressed at the ARC meeting, and that they instead build out towards the rear of the property. In response to those concerns that were raised by the neighbor, the project architect did prepare a shadow study, which was shared at the ARC meeting, which showed that most of the shadow, new shadow that would be cast by the addition would be cast mostly during the winter months and for a short period of time. And then, in response to the concern with the dryer vent, the dryer vent was actually relocated to the lower roof as seen on sheet A 2.10 in the plans. And there's a little cloud there, so you can see where it is. And this, and to relocate the dryer vent was also a suggestion of the ARC members as well, so that has been complied with. So in the end, the ARC voted to forward the project to the Planning Commission with staff's recommendation to acquire a landscape plan at building permit stage. So as far as compliance with the residential design guidelines, the home is located between a one-story building on the right-hand side and a two-story building on the left-hand side, so we feel that proposing another two-story building is still in keeping with the neighborhood. And furthermore, if you look at the elevations all around the building in a 360 view, you can see that the building is set in from the walls below, so it gives nice articulation. You won't see any like two-story facades. And the building also incorporates a, a nice gabled roof. So for these reasons, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the use permit request based on findings one through six in the staff report and based on conditions of approval one through 26 in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have a question for staff at this time? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much, Michael. Would the applicant please step up to the microphone, if you would? And if you could just give us a brief description of the project?
Okay. My name is Chuck Campanella. I'm the architect for the project. So the intent of the project is to expand the, the home with the additional space upstairs to provide privacy in the future when Evra and her mother own the house, all right? And her mother is applying to become a citizen here. Evra has a green card here. So her mother spends half of the year here in order to get citizenship. So since buying the house, Evra has become engaged to Miklos here, and they are planning to have a family. So the intent is to have private space for Evra and her husband upstairs, and then private space downstairs for her mother. Her mother will be a nanny in the future, so having a two-bedroom house and children and, you know, adults and a mother-in-law is a little tight in two bedrooms. So that's the reason for expanding the house to a second floor. So the house is very energy inefficient right now, so it'll be upgraded tremendously with this remodel.
Very good. Any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant's architect? No? Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open it up to a public comment, and do believe at this time, and if anybody from the public would like to comment on this particular item, that was the time to do it. Going once. Open and closed. Okey doke. Bring it back to the commission for, for discussion, a motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to move the commission approve use permit 1729, based on findings one through six, subject to conditions of approval one through 26.
Will we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Before we, before I call for that, I digress. Can I ask the applicant one quick question? I forgot. Or is it too late?
No.
Okay. Are you aware of all the conditions and all the, and you're okay with them?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Seeing none? No abstentions? It's passed. You have a 10-day appeal period before you can begin anything. Congratulations. Okay, next item on our agenda. 620 Al Camino Real. It's a request for a use permit to allow alcohol beverage, beer and wine sales with a type 47 ABC license in conjunction with the new café at Villa Montez Hotel. That is per chapters 1284.210 and 1296.120 of our San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Ami Upadhyay, Planning Department staff. The applicant is requesting for a use permit to allow alcohol beverages sales with a type 47 ABC license in conjunction with existing café at Villa Montez Hotel. James Burkhouse is the applicant and Jose Montez is the owner. The Villa Montez is a 40-room hotel that was developed and opened in 2008. The subject property is located on the east side of Al Camino Real between Kynes Avenue and Angus Avenue West. The total lot size is approximately 12,000 square feet. The three-story hotel consists 40 room, 40 guestrooms and 32 parking spaces. There are six parking spaces located on the ground floor level and 26 parking spaces located below ground floor level. Ground floor level includes, also includes 640 square feet of business center, the lobby, breakfast room, facility, workroom, and a staff room. And the second floor consists of 19 hotel rooms and with a working workout room, including a spa or pool. And the third floor consists of 21 hotel rooms. The existing café is an allowed use within the commercial zoning district. Use permit is required to serve alcohol in conjunction with existing café. Although the hotel was designed and approved with a ground-floor café, it was never operated because of the economy was in recession when it was, the hotel was open in 2008. Instead, the space was used as a storage space and as the hotel struggled to stay in the operation. Now that economy has rebounded and the hotel business has stabilized, making it more feasible to operate the café portion of the project for the hotel guests. The 1,584 square feet café includes a 582 square feet of seating area, 158 square feet of serving bar, 427 square feet of additional serving space, and 414 square feet of fully functional kitchen area. The hours of operation will be Monday to Sunday from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Staff does not anticipate any negative effects from the alcohol sales in conjunction with the café. No expansion of the building will occur. No changes are proposed to the exterior or the interior of the building. The police department has also reviewed the application and is not opposed to the application based on the recommendation, recommended condition of approval for the project. If any operational issues arise in the future related to the use permit, the community development director has the authority to call the item back to the Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission approves this application, the applicant will also be required to obtain a legal license from the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. Staff sent a legal notice to all the property owners within 300 feet of subject site on March 9, 2018. No comments have been received as of writing the report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
Thank you. Good report. Any questions of staff, by commissioners? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And spur of the applicant.
I'm sorry, through the chair. I just have a, just a question about the, how the license works. Is there, is it a specific time period that they get the license, or is, I'm sorry, I don't know this area? Okay. For, as far as the license goes, if we approve the license, is it for a specified time period? Is there, are there renewals? How does that work exactly?
I believe that once the applicant apply for the license, they receive the confirmation later within a 30 days, a 30-day period, and they will have to renew every year. They would receive a license for one year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And now, is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Would you mind stepping up to the microphone and, if you want to, give a quick little description of what you've got going on?
Sure. My name is James Burkhouse. I'm the president of the venture hospitality that manages the hotel. I also was contracted by the family to help them finish the construction and develop the FFNE package for the, for the hotel. When it was developed, it was, it was designed as a four-star hotel with food service, but the market in 2008 was probably one of the worst ones I've seen. So we put that on hold, and now we, now the hotel has, has stabilized, that we want to introduce that amenity for the guests. It's a well-balanced hotel, it's just not rooms. We have gathering rooms, we have a fireplace gathering room, we have a breakfast room in the morning that services the free continental breakfast for the guests. It has a spa, which is very nice. It has an observation deck on the top of the hotel, and it has a café that's never been used. So the type of guests we get, we're about 70 percent high-end corporate, or upscale corporate. A lot of them are technical people that come from all over the world, and they do different sorts of work for the various high-tech companies around us here. And we get biotech firms. So the crowd, it's a very, it's a quiet hotel. Most of the guests leave in the evenings because there's no place for them to eat. And we've surveyed them, so this would be well-received by the guests, so they could, they could stay at the hotel in the evenings, they could, they could obtain food. We've contracted with Starbucks, so we'll be a Starbucks coffee venue, but we'll have upscale food. So we're going to have a boulangerie, pastries, and then we'll have press sandwiches and salads, a Mediterranean-style, quick service. It's not sit-down tablecloth waiters. It's, it's counter service, where you order over a counter and it's delivered to your table. The guests would then be able to lounge at the hotel in the evenings. We would open at 6:30 in the morning for breakfast, which is, is big for the hotel. Particularly with the pastries and Starbucks coffee. The lunch would be primarily not the guests, we're probably, we're thinking it would probably be about 30, 40 percent of the guests would have a lunch there, and then we would get surrounding people from the area for lunch. The evenings would be primarily guests for dinner, a snack, and late arrivals, so they can get something to eat and a glass of wine or beer. We will have room service, but it'll be very limited. It would be more of a brown bag type delivery to the rooms. It's designed to be a kind of fun upbeat, Mediterranean-type food for the guests, so there'd be four or five items you could get for room service. With that, that gives us a four-star designation, which would change the, the service amenities for the guests. So it's, like I said, it's been very well-received, the hotel. We're, we're the highest-rated hotel in the market, and this is just another amenity that would top the hotel off.
Thank you. Any questions of, of the applicant? Commissioner Peterson?
I appreciate your giving me a tour of the hotel when I dropped by this week. One thing I didn't ask was, I see the café area is in process of getting ready to operate. Do you know when you plan to operate, if this is approved tonight?
We would like to open next month sometime, probably towards the end of the month, but it depends on, well, we would open whether we had this license or not. So it's, it's, it's good for the guests and it's good for the hotel. We know the guests would love to have a glass of wine or, you know, or a beer, so opening is not dependent upon getting the license, but we would be open at some time next month.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Through the chair. Can you explain a little bit about who your clientele will be? I know you mentioned hotel guests, but will there be, are you hoping to get non-guests into the hotel as well if you open this bar?
We are.
Okay.
So we would service the, the local community. We've done a survey. A lot of the local businesses would love to have a Starbucks coffee in the middle of the afternoon and a light lunch. So we would get, we anticipate maybe 30, 30, 40 percent in the, in the daytime we'd be from local, local traffic.
Any other questions? I have one. Since I haven't had a chance to actually go by and take a look at the interior, I was looking at the photos here, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood this is actual, this isn't photoshopped what it looks like, or what it's going to look like? I mean, this is actually-
No.
-what it looks like?
It is.
Okay.
It-
It is photoshopped?
I think I took those pictures, so it's definitely not photoshopped.
Okay. Looks good. Thank you. All righty. No further questions? All right. Thank you very much, and I think at this point, open it up to a public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this matter? We'll all rush to the microphone. Okay, open and close. Thank you very much. Bring it back to the commissioners for discussion, motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to move the commission approve use permit 17-28, based on findings, findings as a fact, one through five, and conditions of approval, one through 19.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'd like to second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nope? No abstentions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
I just want to comment that I, also, Mr. Burkhouse, some time ago gave me a tour, and I just want to be sure that's on record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Close. You have a 10-day appeal, appeal period. All righty. Next item on our rapidly-expanding here agenda, city staff discussion. David, anything for us to discuss?
Under city staff discussion tonight, we have several items. The first item has to do with Victory Honda, and we have indicated to the Planning Commission that we would come back with an oral report, an update, in terms of staff's work with Victory Honda to make sure that the Victory Honda ownership and management comply with conditions of approval of a use permit, a conditional use permit that's in place on that property. And there also have been a number of nuisance issues raised by neighbors that our staff has worked with Victory Honda to address. So I'd like to go through these, it may take a few minutes, but I'd like to go through and kind of indicate the work we've, we've done with the representatives at Victory Honda and kind of the status of some of these items. The first item is condition of approval number three from the CUP, the conditional use permit. And this had to do with the hours of operation. The hours of operation were limited to 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturdays, and 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sundays. We heard from neighbors, and check this out, in terms of reviewing the organization's website, that there was some non-compliance in terms of these hours of operation. And specifically, the area of concern had to do with Sundays. Again, the allowed hours of operation on Sundays, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and we found that they were operating from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Victory Honda has adjusted its hours according to the conditional use permit for Sundays. They've updated and modified- They've updated and modified their website. They have various postings at their location. So, at this point, we feel that they have addressed that issue in terms of complying with condition of approval number three, in terms of operating under the allowed hours of operation. The next item is condition of approval number four, and this had to do with memory lane. As you all know, memory lane bisects the site, actually comes through the site from Linden across the site to El Camino Real, and there have been concerns that cars have been parked on memory lane, uh, from, from the Victory Honda dealership, really precluding people from being able to walk on memory lane. So, the idea here is to make sure that memory lane is open at all times to pedestrians. We've worked with the management and staff at Victory Honda. They obtained an encroachment permit from the city of San Bruno, and they installed a bollard so that it makes it much more difficult for a vehicle to park in memory lane, blocking it from pedestrians. Our sense at this point is, generally speaking, with their notification to their staff, the placement of the bollard, it is installed with benefit of an encroachment permit, that they're addressing that matter. Kind of going on, condition of approval number five from the CUP talked about making sure that Victory Honda would maintain the landscape treatments on the property, and this is not only along memory lane, but also along Linden, and there were various options for the ownership to comply with condition of approval number five regarding landscaping. We've worked with Victory Honda's representatives, and they've entered into a contract with a landscape firm, and we have a copy of that contract. We've been monitoring their performance. They're providing regular landscape maintenance four times a month, and that contract is in place, so we're finding that they are compliant with that condition of approval. Going on, condition of approval number seven had to do with parking, and there were a few conditions having to do with parking. This one, number seven, indicated that there was a need for the applicant, Victory Honda in this case, who receives the CUP, needs to provide thirty-one outdoor customer parking spaces, and they have done that. They have submitted to the city a striping plan, which we have a copy of. They've hired a contractor to, uh, do a slurry seal and re-strive portions of their parking lot, both onsite and offsite, and I'll get to that in a minute. And they do have the thirty-one spaces that have now been designated specifically with pavement graphics, so that they are in compliance with that condition. Condition of approval number eight indicates no parking on Linden, and really, to work with their employees, what we found is that sometimes their employees would park on Linden. They have provided notification to their employees. In fact, they have put together a program, and it's a program that's titled Being a Good Neighbor Initiative, which kind of lays out the expectations that the ownership has for its employees in terms of just general conduct, covering a lot of things, including not parking on Linden, uh, not using, um, alarms to locate cars and that sort of thing. So, we're, we're finding that there's been significant improvement in this area. Condition of approval number nine talks about twenty-five employee parking spaces. With that striping plan, those, those twenty-five employee parking spaces have been striped and designated with pavement graphics. Ten of those spaces must be onsite, and they are, and they've actually, on White Way, they've increased the number, uh, overall. They've added forty, uh, spaces offsite on White Way. Now, in terms of the striping plan and its implementation, they've done that. So, in terms of customer spaces, they're striped, they're marked for customers with pavement graphics. Same thing with employees. They have, and in fact, in the case of employees, they exceed, uh, what was required in the CUP. We're going to need, though, to continue to work with this organization, with Victory Honda and its staff, to ensure that these spaces are actually available and used. We, we have found that in terms of, say, employee parking spaces, uh, and in some cases, customer parking spaces, they are storing parking inventory, uh, in those spaces. We've spoken to representatives of Victory Honda, will continue to work with them in this regard, in this area. But they have implemented the striping plan, they have put in the graphics, uh, we are seeing an improvement in this area. We would like to work with them a little bit more in terms of actual implementation to make sure that the employees are, you know, getting to the offsite location, there's a way for them to get back and forth. I think that when one of the staff persons came before you in the past, about six months ago, he indicated that they would set up some sort of shuttle program. So, we see, you know, significant progress here, but we need to continue to monitor and, and achieve, um, more complete compliance. Condition of approval number twelve had to do with lighting, and there was concern, and this was some time ago, about their light standards creating offsite nuisance glare, and we had neighbors complain about that. Some time ago, actually, they had a contractor, electrical contractor, come out and adjust the lights. That, that matter has been addressed. In fact, we've noticed since our last report to you some months ago that we have seen a significant, significant decline in the number of complaints regarding these issues. There were also some other issues that were not related to specific conditions of approval, more about nuisance concerns. So, for example, neighbors indicated some concern about the collection of litter in the area. Victory Honda staff have put out four additional trash containers on the property, and they're regularly maintaining those, emptying those. There was also a concern about a roll-up door open and facing toward Linden and it being somewhat unsightly after hours or late, uh, at night. They've talked to their janitorial service, and that roll-up door, although it will need to be open during operating hours, and they're entitled to do that, um, after hours, it is to be closed, and they understand that. A neighbor complained about HVAC noise. Well, they actually don't have an HVAC, um, area or equipment, but they do have a compressor, and they are, um, operating that compressor, um, only during business hours and not after business hours. There's also a concern about power washing late at night, and they have stopped doing that. They're now doing their power washing during the day. I mentioned a few minutes ago, concern about, say, sales staff using, uh, car alarms to locate a car, and that has, they've talked to their staff about that. In fact, that's one of the issues addressed in the handout that they give to all their employees, the Being a Good Neighbor Initiative, and that's significantly dropped. We've also been working with Victory Honda in terms of deliveries by vendors to this, this location, such as FedEx, UPS, and others. They've actually sent letters to Unisippers and FedEx on two occasions, and they're, they've submitted an application to our city for a loading zone on El Camino Real, and that's, um, being processed. Uh, that, that application has gone to our TSPC, uh, our Transportation Safety and Parking Committee, and was recommended to the city council for approval. We still need to continue to do work with representatives of Victory Honda on that and move that forward. There was also a concern about fast driving in the area, and again, in terms of working with their staff and the Being a Good Neighbor Initiative, they've addressed that. There's a concern about the public address system being used. That's been completely dis, disabled. That's no longer an issue. I, I would say, all in all, in terms of our work with Victory Honda, uh, the representatives have come to our department many times, and we have gone to their premises many times. Our staff, in particular, our associate planner, Matt Neubauer, has really done considerable work with, uh, the staff at Victory Honda. I think it's been a, a very good collaborative effort, and we've seen significant improvement. Not to say that we don't need to do some additional work in terms of working with them, in terms of that, that program for employees, offsite, onsite, getting people back and forth, and the idea that, in particular, um, even as I came here tonight, I drove through the site, and I did notice that there were inventory cars parked in areas that were designated for customers. So, we need to do some additional fine-tuning. We've made a lot of progress. We'll continue to work with the staff, but I would say, all in all, it's been a very good and collaborative effort. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Peterson?
Uh, I, I've inquired about Victory Honda quite a bit, and I have to say, this is the most positive report I can imagine. The, the progress is outstanding. I will agree, however, that, uh, a condition, I think, that's resulted from past pro, past practices there over the years of having employees park in the customer's spaces, it almost may take psychological training sessions for weeks to retrain them, because I saw those spots, and I've never seen those spots more than one space open at a time when I drive by there. So, they may have, uh, customer spaces graphics marked for those spots, but the practice of the employees, uh, doesn't seem to be recognizing that. But, the, the bulk of this report is outstanding, and I, uh, for my part, I, I'm, I think you've made fantastic progress, and, uh, the management must be, uh, it appeared to be much improved when they were here at the last meeting, and from, if they've actually created a good neighbor program, that's the kind of approach that only comes when you have a positive outlook, that's dedicated to coexisting peaceably, if not productively, with the neighbors. I thank you again.
Any other, um, questions, comments?
Through the chair. I just wanted to, um, echo those thoughts. Um, I wanted to thank Director Waltering and staff for addressing the community concerns, uh, for the regular detailed updates, uh, for the collaborative efforts and the improvements, and we look forward to hearing more about, uh, a wonderful outcome, I think, where both the owners and the community is happy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, through the chair. I just want to say thank you on behalf of all those folks that showed up at that last meeting where they were all complaining about Victory Honda. Thank you for the efforts you've put into it. It sounds like you've really listened to what their complaints were and really worked towards resolving those issues. So, thank you on behalf of all those folks.
We do have representatives here tonight from Victory Honda as well.
Through the, through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. I just have a question for you, um, Director Waltering. Also, thank you to your staff for, it takes a lot of effort to get to this point, and it's taken years, but this is significantly such an improvement. The two questions that I have are on the designated parking for the customers. Did I hear you say that employees cannot ever park in there, or it's preferred that they're not parking there? Uh, I want, the reason I ask the question, if they don't have customers, and it seems to be a, a long period of time, and if it means parking less on the street, it could be a benefit to the commu, to the neighbors. So, I wanted to understand that parking component. And then the other question, in locating the cars and beeping, I, my, my understanding that the, that the horn beep is going, like, you know, that loud beep, or is it the one that's, you're looking for your car, it's just that smaller beep that most of us use when we go into any parking lot to look for our car? So, I just, I wanna understand that, just because when I'm making a decision or there's, um, concerns coming up from the community, there's quite a bit of difference between the two. One is the annoying one, that you wonder if it's your car being broken into, and the other one is, it's really a very short-term beep to get to your car.
Yeah. Let me start with your, your second comment or question. What we heard is that it was more the panic rather than the chirp, and with the Good Neighbor Initiative policy they put in place, we've noticed a, a significant change in, in talking to, to Matt, our associate planner, who's been following this pretty closely. In terms of the calls coming to him, we've been directing calls to him to try to focus, uh, this, this matter and address it and take care of it. The calls have significantly dropped, but it was the louder rather than the softer chirp that was the concern. In terms of parking, the idea really is to, to make sure that onsite, that if patrons come, customers come, that there are parking spaces available. As, as indicated in my, my presentation, Victory Honda has actually designated a large number, forty, spaces on White Way for employees. So, we wanna make sure that the employees get in the habit, you know, we talk about behavior, of using those. And, and the main concern is, is more the inventory storage, the storage of new cars, cars being sold in these spaces being designated for customers and/or employees. That, that's our primary concern. We wanna make sure that the employees and customers have a place to park onsite, that there isn't inventory storage in those spaces so that, um, people are tempted to, to park nearby on Linden or, or elsewhere. That, that's our primary focus.
Okay. That's clear. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Beas, on?
Through the chair. David, did you say these folks are from Victory Honda?
I did. I certainly did.
I'd like to address you and just say thank you for your efforts in helping fix these problems. It doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you very much for coming and thank you for your efforts.
Thanks for your understanding.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Well, I'm gonna make a comment, probably not the most popular one, but sometimes I think there can be over-regulations or over-governmenting or overseeing, um, you know, and I, and I understand the problems that the neighborhood has, and rightfully so. Some of the things I hear, though, I swear, I just go, oh, my God, I cannot possibly believe that I'm actually hearing this in this day and age, you know? I do believe Victory Honda has done a, a great job trying to corral in a lot of outside elements that really are kind of not necessarily in their purview of doing business. Litter, you know, trash, what have you, I mean, some of the other items that have been addressed. I mean, the things that, that are within their purview business, and they've been rightfully, they've, they've, they've worked on them with staff. You guys have done a great job, but sometimes, I, I swear, I just shake my head and go, wow, there's like, this is like too much Big Brother for me, to be quite honest with you, and I, um, I need, I just wanna caution people about that, you know? Just, uh, you don't wanna have too much government in your business all the time. I, I don't feel, anyway, but that's my personal opinion on this particular item. I think you guys have done a great job. You guys have done a great job. It's working great. I just caution on over-regulating or policing, if you will. Thank you. I'm off myself.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
I can't help but respond, um, Chair Chase, to your comment, and I would agree that over-regulating, you have to really think about that. But in listening to the neighborhood that came out, it wasn't about regulations, it was truly direct, direct issues that happened. I don't know if the microphone is picking this up, I wanna be sure. But the, the neighbors were absolutely, uh, many, many, many were valid, and yes, there were some that, you know, I had to take it in myself because I own a business in San Bruno, and I understand that. But for the most part, and I think Victory Honda agreed, that there was work to be done here, and they, uh, and it took us a long time to get to this point, and, uh, you know, there were previous owners of Victory Honda, and, um, it was Grace Honda, it had been issues for a number of years. So, I, I want, in support of the-
So, I want, in support of the community that came out, to acknowledge the fact that they were heard, and there were things, litter, if it's coming from employees, you have to make every effort, or other things, cigarette butts, as they indicated, lots of kinds of things. You've got to make effort to have your employees, or your employment community, to have respect and have, you know, that they're in a community. And so, I just want to comment as well, to leave my voice. But I do understand, from a regulation point of view, that we, myself, I'll speak as my own, as a commissioner, I look at that very carefully, because there are times that there are recommendations, that I'm thinking, that's not anything that I could agree to. So, thank you for your comment, and, but I wanted to voice mine as well.
I got no problem with that, and thank you. I'll just, I have to make one more comment, though, now, because I agree with you, as far as, you know, neighborhood is concerned. I mean, there were legitimate complaints, for a long time. But, I think it got to the point, at least for me, where it became everything was their fault. That's the way I was beginning to perceive it, and I didn't think that was quite fair to Victory Honda. It seemed like everything in the neighborhood almost felt like they were pointing their fingers at them, and some of it, completely rightfully so, but not all of it. And, you know, I drive by there every day, I work graveyard, so I'm working all kinds of different hours, and I go by there different times a day, and, you know, I just don't see all the things that go on there, but I don't live there. So, I don't want to put myself necessarily in their shoes 100% of the time, but I just kind of want to, and I appreciate your comment, and it's well taken, and I hope you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you, thank you. And since I have the gavel, anybody else have any comments about this one?
Regarding city staff discussion, or?
In regards to city staff discussion.
So, if I could go on, that was one item.
That was only one?
That was, and that was just an informational item, so, we're not finished yet, Chair Chase.
Pick up the pace, okay, sorry.
The next item really is kind of an update. We have a number of projects going on, and I wanted to share with you status of some of the projects, things coming in, recent actions, things to come. So, for example, your Architecture Review Committee, a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, heard a couple of items this past week, including, heard the project, heard about the project at 111 San Bruno Avenue. And that's a mixed-use project that will come to the full Planning Commission, probably in the next 60 to 90 days, something like that. The focus of ARC, the Architecture Review Committee, several of you were there, or at least a couple of you, was really more the architecture, colors, materials, more architectural elements. There's a lot more work to be done with that project. There are a number of concessions that are being asked for by the property owners, the applicants with that project, and so the staff will be working with them on those matters, and there will be a, what I'll refer to as a community benefits agreement, kind of, you know, in turn, for the concessions. What sort of benefits would the applicant property owners be willing to offer? Could be affordable housing, there could be other aspects as well. That's something that we'll be working with the applicants on, the property owners on, bring that back to you, but it's going to take a little bit of time to get there. In any case, the committee heard that last week. In terms of architectural elements, colors, materials, there was general support, I would say, some suggestions for some modifications, and we'll continue, at a staff level, to do some additional work on that, and that will come to you probably in the next 60 to 90 days, something like that. In addition, you heard and you recommended to the City Council approval of the Skyline Residential Project. That did go on to the City Council, as you recall, 70 residential units, 30 of which are multifamily, for faculty and staff. They would be affordable units, provided by the college. Eleven of those units would be deed restricted over time for a 55-year period. In any case, the others as well would be below market rate, offered by the college to their faculty and staff. And then in addition to those 30 units, there would be 40 single-family residential units. That project did go on to City Council. It went before the City Council at their February 27th meeting for first reading, and then went back to the City Council for second reading and formal adoption and final approval on March 13th. So, that did go forward. We have been working with the applicant. I expect that we'll be working with them fairly diligently, in terms of improvement plans, and then after the improvement plans for the public improvements, they'll be developing their construction documents, submitting those to staff for plan checks. So, it seems like that's a project that will be moving forward, and the community will benefit from 70 new residential units over time. In terms of residential units, and just talking about housing, at the next City Council meeting coming up, at the March 27th meeting, it's time for our annual progress report to Housing and Community Development, HCD. And this past year, it's our time to really report to HCD, in terms of how are we doing in terms of implementing our housing element. This past period, this past calendar year, we only produced 15 new housing units, 14 of which were ADUs, by the way. So, the ADUs are being blended in, and are indeed providing another type of housing for our community, and actually kind of reaching, you know, those people that could use housing in terms of affordability. So, 14 of the 15 units are ADUs, another component of housing in our community, and I think most communities throughout the state are experiencing a real strong interest in ADUs. Even though that's a relatively small number this past year, there are a lot of units coming into the pipeline, or in the pipeline. So, for example, I mentioned the 70 units associated with the Skyline Residential Project. Our staff is also working with developers and applicants on other projects. So, for example, I mentioned the 111 San Bruno Avenue project, that's 61 or so units there. We also are working with the redevelopment of the Mills Park Center, that center. And Mills Park could potentially, again, you know, it's early, but could potentially be 400 units of additional housing. Under construction, as we can see, the plaza with 83 units. So, there, the good news is, there's a fair amount of housing in construction, in the pipeline, recently approved and moving forward. So, I'm expecting that, say, in the next couple of years, we'll see a fair amount of housing production here in San Bruno. In terms of some recent applications, you may have noticed the vacant property on El Comino Real, next to Berkshire Hathaway, that vacant lot there. There's an apartment behind, further to the east. We received an application there for a new hotel, 34-unit hotel on that site. So, that just came in, that's an application that we've been working for some time, really, with the property owners, and going back and forth on what could go there, and how many hotel rooms, and so forth. So, that just came in. And then, at 271 El Comino Real, Lee's Buffet, again, that's one we've been working with the applicant property owner for some time. They had a neighborhood meeting that you may recall, some time ago, and there were some comments about the interface between that development, 24 units, residential units, and the existing single-family residential, further to the west, immediately to the west, on Linden, and that interface. So, the design professionals, applicants have been working on that. That was recently resubmitted, and it's going through our review process for, you know, completeness of that application. So, those are some things going on. I just wanted to give you kind of some highlights of some recent actions, some things coming in, and, you know, where we stand in terms of our housing element. And that's really it for tonight, in terms of just some updates. I'd like to, you know, do that fairly frequently, just to kind of let you know about, as things move from you on to council, kind of what happened, maybe touch on some work that you're doing, say, at the ARC level, some of you aren't there, and then to give you kind of a sense of what may be coming in. So, I'll try to do that on a fairly regular basis. That concludes my comments on that item.
Okay, that'd be great. It's a good report. I'm sure we would all appreciate getting the updates like that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any questions?
Through the chair. Commissioner Peterson?
I had a question about the, on development. On the website, there's a Bay Hill site for that development.
Yes.
I offered some suggestions to staff, trying to offer improvement ideas, so that it could be more readily seen by people who wanted to know about Bay Hill, what the timeline might be, and what the best estimated schedule might be for the steps that it takes to reach fruition, maybe even construction. And I wondered, it might be hard to reply to that in this meeting, perhaps the next meeting, you can give an update on that, and if there, what you think about, is there some way to improve that website, so the public can understand what the next step may be, and what would follow it, with some kind of timeline?
I can respond to that now, and probably follow up with more information later. We did receive your information, and I have reviewed it with the staff person working on that project, and we'll work with your comments. In terms of trying to anticipate the construction schedule with a specific plan, that could be difficult to do. In terms of giving people a better understanding of a next step, we can certainly do that. And we are looking at your comments, we will use probably a number of them, in terms of adding to that portion of our website on the Bay Hill specific plan. For your general information, in terms of where are we with the Bay Hill specific plan, at this point in time, the consultant, Diet and Batiya, is working with a number of conceptual alternatives that they've developed, based on the public engagement process. Many of you attended some of those meetings, you're certainly familiar with those meetings. As part of the contract with the consultant team, working on the specific plan, the Bay Hill specific plan, they had a property owners' meeting, reaching out to property owners in the Bay Hill area, it's about 100-acre area, they focused on property owners. They had another meeting, a community workshop, where the community was invited. They had a study session of Planning Commission and City Council, and then they had a stakeholders' meeting. So, they had four different venues of public outreach, to get an understanding from the public, as to what is the public, whether stakeholders, commissioners, community members, what have you, property owners, what's the vision for those areas? We look at a plan for developing and redeveloping this area over time, given the fact that we have YouTube as a key property owner, YouTube owns about 40 acres within that 100-acre area, they're expanding. With that in mind, and with that context, what could this area be over time? We have a lot of surface parking lots out there, that perhaps could be redeveloped into buildings, open space, other types of land uses. What's the vision? And so, Diet and Batiya received quite a bit of information from the community, they've developed three conceptual plans. YouTube also has a vision for the area, a fourth plan, and those concept alternatives are now in an evaluation stage. We're looking at traffic impacts, we're looking at housing impacts, primarily those two areas, and we expect to get that information in the very near future. Once we get that information and can fine tune, in terms of the traffic impacts, housing impacts, and some other evaluation criteria, we'll refine those concept alternatives, and then go back out to the community, and basically share, we had those visioning exercises, this is what we heard, a vision statement was generated, guiding principles were generated, that information will be shared, and then the alternatives will be shared, in terms of how they relate to what was heard. And then, we'll be looking for feedback as to what is preferred, in terms of how this area could be developed, in terms of overall land use pattern, circulation pattern, whether it's vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, land use, is it primarily office, is it mixed use, you know? So, from a land use perspective, a circulation perspective, open space perspective, et cetera. And I would expect that there would be some sort of hybrid, I'll say it that way. And we'll be looking ultimately through that next phase, concept alternative phase, to see a preferred alternative, which would probably be some sort of hybrid, I'm gonna maybe assume that. And the City Council would give us direction on that. That preferred alternative would then be the project, basically, for purposes of then moving forward, with a full environmental impact report, in an EIR, a full environmental impact report, there are alternatives evaluated as well. And again, there are public meetings and hearings that will be fully noticed, that will take us through not only the concept alternatives, to a preferred alternative, to preparing an EIR, to then evaluating the EIR, certifying the EIR, and eventually adopting a specific plan for the Bay Hill area. And again, you know, the overall boundaries are essentially from El Comino Real to 280, from San Bruno Avenue West over to 380, that general area, a little over 100 acres of land. And that adopted specific plan, then, would be the guide, as is the Transit Quarters Plan, the TCP, for our downtown area. Same thing, basically. It would be our guide for future projects, development projects and redevelopment projects within the Bay Hill area over time. So, how long will it take to realize that plan? Hard to say. It depends on the economy and so forth. But that plan, we're hoping that that plan would be adopted by the end of this year, this end of this calendar year. So, that's kind of the update on that. And we appreciate your comments, and we'll work with your comments in terms of updating the Bay Hill site.
Through the chair.
One of the reasons I ask is because, well, first of all, the public, looking at that website presentation on the Bay Hill specific plan, it's very hard to get a sense of what the near-term dates, maybe over the next six or eight months, might be. I think it's understandable, in the planning, design, and construction context, that dates change. But to have no dates is a bigger challenge than having some dates that change. The other thing I was thinking of, and you certainly went through a tremendous list of the events that are coming up, but the other thing I was thinking of, and I'm not sure where it would fit in there, is that business organizations such as YouTube and Walmart are producing some of the most imaginative approaches to business that there are today. I think generally, people would agree with that concept. And along those lines, you might expect that after they see some of these planning documents, even at the early stage, they may look at that land and come up with some suggestions that are not in any of these conceptual alternatives, because they have a business objectives, they try to match those to the geography. Just as a for instance, to minimize the impact of parking, you could have parking garages that, a swath of parking garages that was right next to 280 and 380, that's completely invisible to the community, because in the front of those garages could be office space, which could have vast vista views of the Bay Area. And this may, this sort of thing may require a ballot issue, where it exceeds the current guidelines for what you can have in terms of height or garages. But if that, if that approach, if the ability for business entities to, as early as possible, consider some of these things, is, the farther off that's put, the farther away, or possibly never, might it come to fruition, as opposed to what I consider a more conventional approach of your consultant, Diet and Batiya. And for that matter, you probably have a- And for that matter, you, you probably have a contract with them. They must have a deliverable coming up in the near future. Do you have any idea what that might be and what time it might be?
Commissioner Peterson, in terms of dates, let me just go back to dates. I've given you kind of an overview of the process. Once we know the dates for those meetings in terms of delivering the concept alternatives, those dates will be put on the website. We'll be letting people know. We don't have those dates yet, but when we do, those will go on the website. In terms of kind of what you're describing, Diet and Batia is a well-known, cutting-edge firm and offering us the opportunity to really evaluate and including the businesses, the property owners, community members, in the various forums they've offered. And the concept alternative stage will put to paper a lot of the ideas that have already been pulled from, invited from business members, community members, et cetera. And there'll be an opportunity for full discussion and an adjustment and expansion. So that, that's the next phase. And, and they are working within their contract and we expect that over the next, say, 45 days, 45 to 60 days, that we would probably be scheduling that next level of outreach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Sure. Commissioner Luthen.
I want to thank Director Woultering for the details and for laying that out so clearly, especially for, for me and I'm sure for the, I'm sorry. I apologize. I wanted to thank Director Woultering for the detailed, up-to-date report on the Bay Hill, especially in light of the fact that many of us are newer commissioners and don't have the experience of going through a specific plan. And I really appreciate it. It's very helpful.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mason.
Director Woultering, I was hoping maybe you can talk a little bit about the upcoming meeting regarding the Aquatics Center. We received a notice in the mail and I just checked it for March 22nd, this Thursday. I'm not sure if you might have.
I'd be happy to do that.
The meeting with the architect?
I'd be happy to do that. Do you have by chance on your screen, or maybe you have a handout with the Times?
It's, yeah, it says first consent meeting at 6:30 PM.
Okay. So this, this is a public open house for the proposed new recreation and aquatics facility that would be located in City Park. And as you are all familiar, the, the city received funds from PG&E as a result of the gas line explosion and fire restitution funds. And about $50 million of those funds have been designated for a new recreation facility, aquatics facility, likely a combined complex at City Park. The city has hired a consultant team to develop preliminary plans and that firm is Group Four. The name of the firm is Group Four. Group Four has been working with city representatives and also representatives of the San Bruno Community Foundation. As you recall, for some time, the San Bruno Community Foundation reached out to the community to, to find out how these restitution funds could be used in terms of a community benefit. And based on a number of visioning sessions, listening sessions, came to that the community was looking for using these funds for replacing our recreation and aquatics facility with a new recreation and aquatics facility. Group Four was hired to basically develop preliminary plans. Group Four is looking at not only the potential to completely remove and replace with a new facility called a Recreation and Aquatics Center, they're also looking at the potential to adapt, reuse, as part of the new development, the existing recreation center. So they're looking at those options. They're also looking at what they're referring to as a hill alternative and a valley alternative. If you can think about City Park and think about the existing recreation facility kind of on the hill down below us here, the idea with the hill alternative is either to reuse and expand the existing recreation facility on the hill and combine it with an aquatics facility, or alternatively downslope, kind of where the pool is, the current pool, and even further downslope toward the creek, that the valley alternative is kind of looking at that area as a site for a new recreation and aquatic center. So at this point, this is the first community open house workshop to share some of their initial studies, research, some drawings, some ideas, and to share that information with the community to get some feedback in terms of, what do you think about the hill alternative, that site? What do you think about the valley alternative? To look at programming and activities within this new center. What, what are people looking for? Obviously, there's some specific needs in terms of, say, a gymnasium, a pool facility. But there are some other aspects too, that, there are some options for consideration. So they'll be sharing information in terms of site, citing the facility. They'll be sharing information in terms of some options, in terms of elements, components of this facility, what they could be, what are some optional elements, and, and really looking for feedback so that they can continue developing their preliminary design. Group Four is under contract to produce the preliminary design. Once that's done with, again, this community input, they'll continue to be reaching out to the community. And as they, you know, go stage by stage to develop these plans, they'll be reaching out to the community in a variety of ways and, and working with staff and other representatives. Once the preliminary plans are completed, then the next step would be kind of as, as you do at the Planning Commission. As you work with an applicant on a private development plan, those essentially are preliminary plans. And then the next step would be to go to construction documents, design development plans. So Group Four is under contract with the city right now to develop those preliminary plans, basically in terms of where, what's it going to include, what is it generally going to look like, and all of that. So that's where we stand. And in fact, at your April meeting, at your April meeting of the Planning Commission, I'm expecting that Group Four will come before the Planning Commission and, and share kind of where they are and solicit your feedback in terms of, you know, design options and alternatives and whatnot. So they, they will be reaching out to the Planning Commission likely at our April meeting. That's my update.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff-ish? I guess our next thing is select arch review members?
So the, the final aspect of staff discussion tonight is really looking to you. I need three alternatives for your next Architecture Review Committee meeting. So which three of you would like to join us? So Chair Chase, two more please. Commissioner Luthen. And one more please. And Vice Chair BSodi, thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I could, just before we close, one thing, two things, okay. I guess I could open up public comment since we have a member of the public here. Step up to the microphone and give us your name and what it is you'd like to talk about.
My name is Calista. I live on Poplar Avenue. And I did not realize that Victory Honda was going to be on staff discussion this meet, this meeting. So I, I have a request. I'm not sure what was spoken about or exactly reported. I have a little sympathy for the staff not wanting to perhaps do the full notification because it was an extensive list. And frankly, that extensive list that we had originally was 400 people, but that was for a new proposed project. And then we at least, you know, brought, you know, a challenge asking that the conditions of their permit be enforced. And so I understand they have been making headway on that. And I guess I would just like to ask the commissioners or the staff how, how, I feel like we should at least have been noticed somehow because I think it's fairly obvious and understood that you have a couple of nearby neighbors who have been following this. And I feel like it's a little bit disingenuous to have had this project, which has been such a problem for the neighbors, that we were not given proper notice, what I would say, to be able to have the opportunity to come to the Planning Commission to hear, you know, the staff discussion of it. So it's been buried under staff discussion, so, you know, we haven't been properly noticed. But I'm, I'm just asking for, you know, somehow or another, can we be? Because I'd like to follow it along. I have some comments that I think that they have actually done better in a number of ways, which I'm glad about, but I, I haven't heard any of the report. So how can this be handled in the future?
Well, moving forward in the future, I may have to just ask Mr. Woultering if you have any ideas of how we might?
I'd be happy to respond. Chair Chase.
Thank you.
First, there is no project at this time.
Sure, understood.
Number one, there is not a notice and requirement, number two. This is an oral report, an update to the Planning Commission. And as we described, it is on the agenda, publicly distributed and noticed agenda. They have made significant progress, as we described to you in detail tonight, in terms of adhering to conditions of approval and addressing nuisance issues. As I indicated, we would continue to work with Victory Honda in terms of managing their vehicle storage. But generally speaking, they've made significant progress, as we discussed earlier this evening. I would be more than happy to meet with the speaker personally, if she would want to schedule some time, and I would go through the report with her one-on-one. I'd be happy to do that. At this point though, my, my sense is that there's been, I will refer to it as, more than general compliance with conditions of approval. Yes, we will continue to monitor and work with Victory Honda representatives at a staff level. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. If I could just, go ahead, Commissioner Peterson.
I'd just like to comment on this. The member of the public, Calista, you weren't here for Director Woultering's presentation and I would characterize it as overall very positive about Victory Honda's response. Having been in your position as a member of the public coming to either City Council or Planning Commission, I'd like to recommend to you that you regularly review the agenda for those bodies, the council and the Planning Commission, so that you can be aware of every item that might catch your interest. And I, for government purposes, there are requirements, notice requirements. These comments were, while they were very interesting and germane to your interests, they did not require public notice. So if we did, if the city did provide public notice, it would then be criticized if it didn't on everything.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your interest. Thank you.
Understood. I will proactively go ahead and look at the agendas every month going forward. I, I kind of just assumed that maybe we would have given, been given a heads up just because we brought this forward at great length. And I would say, I think some of our Linden Street neighbors are having a bit more of a, a couple of ongoing challenges. I, I do appreciate the progress that's being made. And believe me, I think the staff has been working very hard with this project sponsor. I wish that I had known, but I take it that I will then just have to proactively just monitor the upcoming agendas to know that they're on it.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Asking the patience of the commission. The public that's watching this may also be interested in this. There, it's not unusual during city staff and Planning Commission discussion that either the staff or the commission will bring up an item that's not on the agenda because they happen to think of it, or they plan to speak on it, whether it was on the agenda or not. So I would encourage you, when you feel you have ongoing items of interest, to come to the meetings. One of the things you would have found is that the commission has had discussions with staff and Planning Commission meetings last several months about Victory Honda and the staff has been, in my opinion, responding very energetically to that. Thanks for your interest.
Thank you. I was at City Hall in another meeting. I think we have, if you can, one more comment from one more public member. But thanks.
Go right ahead, please. If I could have your name, pardon me?
Before she starts?
Yes.
So Calista, the staff reports that we get come out on the Friday before our meeting. They're available to the public on the city website under the PlanningCommission. That's how, that's how we get our reports. So you get the complete packages online. They're available to everybody who wants to look. And also, tonight's meeting will be on YouTube tomorrow or the next day, if you wanted to see actually what was said. So I mean, the information's there. Thank you.
You're welcome. If you could state your name for the record, please?
My name is Maria Berry and I live on Linden Avenue. I was actually at home watching all of you, so I did hear a good portion of the report. And I would like to thank everyone for all of their hard work on it, especially Calista, who has helped so much to further the, the public's end of this, and, and you as well. But I just have to say that the report was very, it just seemed like it was a glowing report, where I don't know that I necessarily agree with, with all of it. The car alarm situation, Mrs. Johnson, I saw that you were wondering about that. And just imagine, it's 8 o'clock in the morning, 7 o'clock in the morning, after you've worked hard all week, and you're, you're being roused by car alarms. Not cool, not, not acceptable. And it's not just a little blip. And it's not just once in a while, it happens quite often. I called and reported not too long ago that not only was there a car alarm that woke me up, I got up to just double check because you never know if it's a neighbor's car alarm or what's going on. And I can look out my window and, and see exactly what's happening. And I watched and I saw one of the staff members go and find the car. Then someone asked him something and, and he forgot where the car was. And he, you know, set the car alarm a second time to go back and get the car, you know, and then he took it and drove it over to, to have it worked on. And this is not an occasional thing that happens. So it does continue to be a problem. I just wanted to let you know that. It has improved, but it continues, as I would think you would agree, to be a work in progress.
If I could, through the chair. As we indicated to the commissioners tonight, we understand that. And, and we have spent a lot of time working with Victory Honda representatives and we will continue to do that.
And it is apparent that you've done that. And again, I thank you for it. I would like I would like to, because you've spent a good time talking with the staff, it would be nice if some of the neighbors could be included in those conversations because it feels like you're getting their perspective and, do you know what I mean? It would be nice if we could be included in some of those sessions. I don't even know if that's a possibility, but I'm just asking.
You know.
There's always two sides to a story. And one more thing, I was very perplexed about your comment regarding the Big Brother issue. What do you mean by that exactly? Because all the, I don't know how you meant that exactly, but the neighbors have just been holding Victory Honda accountable to their business plan and what they were supposed to be doing and nothing more. So I don't see how the Big Brother comment was appropriate.
Well, I'm sorry you don't feel that way, and you're entitled to your opinion, as am I. Basically, the way I feel about it is, they are a business, they've been doing a very good job, in my opinion, of working with the community development director, of addressing the issues that the neighbors have brought forward. But I also see it as, everything seems to be Victory Honda's problem. I mean, it's like everything that goes on, it seems to funnel down to them, from the litter to the smoking to, you know, whatever. And I just, I feel too much, you know, too much overwatching, too much government, too much policing, you know?
It's just the city. It's just what the city said that they should be doing. So I don't understand. Are you enforcing what the city is asking?
Through the chair, if I could, Chair Chase. There are conditions of approval. There is a CUP in place. It is important that this business and all businesses comply with conditions of approval. That's our objective. We're working with them to make sure that they comply with those conditions. Tonight, during the presentation, I went through those conditions of approval. Those are our guide. There was some noncompliance, and we've made tremendous progress. There's still more work to do, and our staff will continue to work with Victory Honda to ensure that they comply, as other businesses should and do, with conditions of approval. We will do that. I'd be happy to meet with the speaker, and if, you know, there are issues that come up that she would like to let us know about, she could contact me or our associate planner, Matt Newbaum, and the two of us are kind of working together on this. And we would appreciate the information. Again, we're seeking compliance, we're working collaboratively with Victory Honda. We're certainly open to receiving comments from neighbors. We want, you know, compliance, and, you know, we've made progress. We're going to continue in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're absolutely correct. And I do appreciate your comments. I'm glad you guys came out. Unfortunately, a little bit late, but that's okay.
Well, that comment got me off the couch and right over here because I said that comment is what got me here to talk to you.
I figured a comment like that I made would hopefully get somebody up off the couch and bring into a meeting.
Well, you did.
It was a whole idea.
We're watching.
We need more community, you know, input.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to thank you for coming out. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Jones?
Just a comment, a quick comment. Clarification, a couple of things for me. One is, when we have items that are not on the agenda, would item number six be under city staff discussion, would that be open for the public to comment on, or do they have to bring it up under number three, public comment not on the agenda? It is on the agenda, but it's for our purpose, right? So I'm wondering just how that would be handled for future. And I also want to comment, there was a, someone from the public indicated that it was buried under city staff discussion. I just really want to clarify that because, and I wanted just to comment to you, Calista, that over the last meeting, we had asked for some updates. And so part of that was for our purpose. And so I just really want to convey that it was not buried underneath there. It's really where it's supposed to be. So, and you know how I feel about the whole Victory Honda, but I just really, for our staff purposes and how we conduct business, that it was not buried. So I wanted, thanks. But if you could answer that question, would that have been a public comment? Could they have come up to, the public come up to give comment?
Through the chair, I'd be happy to respond. This section is really discussion between staff and commissioners. Not to say that through the chair, that if somebody would want to comment, the chair could acknowledge the individual, and then the person could comment. The focus here, though, is really not for action on a project. We don't do that if it's not on the agenda. This is more discussion, as you noticed in terms of the update, second item, the bulleted second item. I gave you kind of a broad update on a number of topics, more informational, more informational, and not really for action. This is more informational, sharing information, staff to you, and back to us. And you could hear, say, for example, if there's an area that you would like to see on a future agenda for formal discussion, perhaps in action, this would be an area where you may say, we would like to hear about this or consider this, could you put this on an agenda? But to be direct, this is really more informational, it's really more between commission and staff. If the chair would want to accept a comment or receive a comment, the chair could do that.
That clarifies it for me because what it says is that anyone from the audience that would have come would have basically been listening to the information, but truly, it's, again, it didn't change anything. So it gives me a bit more reassurance, but that there is open opportunity to move it forward. So that's a good thing. So thank you.
You know, at this point, I need to close the public comment that I opened a moment ago. Okay? And I think we're going to move on to Planning Commission discussion.
Through the chair, if I may.
Commissioner Peterson?
At our last meeting, we had a discussion around electronic delivery of packages.
Yes.
And I was just going to check in with my fellow commissioners and see if we had any consensus or comments or...
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I, for one, of course, received electronic packet. I looked at it, I tried to study it, and I don't know, it may be because of my work experience in construction, if I can't see a drawing in paper form and examine it, move it back and forth, and sometimes use a scale, a physical ruler on it, I'm out of luck. So I'm stuck with paper because that's the way I work. But at the same time, I can see the use for electronic documents, and they were very clear. So for quality and appropriateness, I give them an A, and I still give the paper an A. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Through the chair. It worked for me. And I'm, you know, I'm an educator, and so I love my paper and I love my notes, and I write all over the place. However, I was able to make it work. And so I, we still received some paper, and I'm wondering at one point if we receive everything electronic and just get something from here when we arrive, if we want a paper, just a thought.
Again, through the chair, if I could, this is a pilot.
That's right.
A test, and we'll continue it. But if you want us to provide paper, we can do that. So we're really looking to you for direction on this. This was a test this time. If it works for you, terrific, and if not, we can go back to paper.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a recommendation for those of us, I do like my paper as well, but I certainly can make it work, that maybe it's our responsibility to stop by and pick it up. I think that staff's use of time is important, and I think that if there's any chance that maybe we, if we want paper, that we can pick up our own packets.
Through the chair, I'm willing to, I have a 60-pound lightning-fast printer in my house. If I want paper, I can print it. So if it's better for the city to do it only electronically, I can live with that.
Through the chair, if I may, echo the idea of having the packet here when we arrive. I agree with that. I've been advocating for paperless, I think, since I got appointed. So first of all, thank you for the email. I think that was great, very helpful. Hopefully, we're saving costs to the city and advocates by, or the applicants, I should say, by actually reducing the large paper blueprints that you were providing before. I would be okay with just having a packet when I come here and reviewing this on my own, on my computer. Thank you.
Oh, through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I don't want to miss this. This packet, best print quality ever. You must have a new printer, or it was just tuned up. It's excellent.
Good.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Certainly.
I am still undecided about whether I prefer electronic or paper. I am a paper person, but I have the heart of an environmentalist, so I would like to give it another shot. And my feeling is, however, that if we do end up still asking for paper, that the scale can be reduced for me. Thank you.
And for me, you know what, I'm sorry, I like paper, but I'll go with the electronic as long as I can pick up the paper, you know, way prior to being, before I walk in, you know, a few days or whatever. So I'm good with whatever. Electronic is fine. I'm good with trying that as long as I get my paper. Anyway, any...
So just to be clear, the direction is to continue the pilot, continue in this direction. And again, if you find it's not working, let us know, we'll adjust. But we'll continue to send you the information electronically for now, correct?
That's great.
Okay?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I do, one other, okay, one other comment. Just this last week before the Architecture Review Committee, we had Wendy's come to us with a new design. And I don't want to speak for my fellow commissioners, but I think it was an exciting presentation where Wendy's is going to be actually changing their layout. Inside, they're going to have a fireplace, it's going to be more family-friendly, and they're actually going to be including lighting throughout the parking lot, new landscaping, drought-tolerant landscaping, and a different color scheme to go with the rebranding of Wendy's. So just because Wendy's is right on El Camino Real, everybody can see it, I just thought it was worth pointing out that it's an exciting time, and it's an exciting facelift, one that is invited and needed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Planning Commission discussion is about to be over. I just have to make one comment. On a personal level, I had some, I'm having a kitchen remodeled, and I have never had an experience at a counter like I had at the City of San Bruno. They've been fabulous. I mean, commissioner, you'd think I would have no problem understanding all the ins and outs, and you know what? Not so. Jerry's been great, Roy's been great, David, I mean, everybody at that counter is like spot on the money, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't think it's because, you know, I'm a planning commissioner, because I'd sit there and I'd watch other applicants come in and out, and everybody got the same treatment. And I'll tell you what, we've got really good staff over there, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And on that note, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Wow.